I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our attorney is not here. She's invented a fender bender right out front, so she'll hopefully be joining us soon. But I'm gonna go ahead and get started. And if we need any legal advice, she'll add it as she gets here. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03 and start the meeting off with a Pledge of Allegiance. It's hard when you're in the front. There you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Michelle, do you need to do a roll call or you're good? Okay. The minutes. Michelle, some of them off this afternoon. Did everybody have a chance to review them? And does anybody have any corrections or changes, additions to those minutes?
No changes.
No changes? Okay. I feel like there's something funky in the first sentence of Baldenfield Town Center. Maybe the word representing should be missing.
Representing somebody.
Yeah. Something's funky there. And then in the second paragraph, the proposed project would consist, the sentence that starts with "there are three walking paths that are proposed for low-intensity retail and commercial use." Does that be fleshing out? I wasn't at the meeting, so that doesn't make perfect sense to me. I did watch it on the PAC 28, but I don't recall that statement. Verification?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah. "There are three walking paths that are proposed for low-intensity retail and commercial use." Is it three pads?
Pads.
That's what I was guessing. Okay. So, three, there are three pads.
Get it up by the existing building.
Yes, yes. Well, that's what I thought, but again, I was not here, so.
Give me a minute.
Anybody have any other comments?
Just the very end. It said to adjourn the meeting. The very last line.
Okay.
Probably just the beginning.
The other one I had is on the bottom of page two, last paragraph, "off her along Curtis Street." It's actually Curtis Ave. Anything else? Anybody?
Jerry, did you write that?
Yeah. Yeah, I can give it to you afterward, but that's okay. Okay. But I have a motion to approve the minutes as they're going to be corrected.
I'll make a motion.
Second? True? No negatives. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I did have one last piece of other business. Michelle, has everyone responded to you about the planning symposium?
Yes.
You're not missing anything? Anybody? Anybody that's going responded?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so then we'll move on to old business, which is Baldenfield Town Center updated plans. So if you'd like to stand up, introduce yourself to the crowd and go through your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Brody Smith. I'm an attorney at Bonshin and King. To my right is Steve Riedska from EER. He's the engineer. And then representing our clients, AC Hammer LLC is Charlie Brewer and Joe Gack. Where's your edit by approach?
Nope. It's fine.
So I brought extra copies of these drawings so everyone could have a copy of it in front of them if they wish.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe it's the same as what you got. Maybe. You got it? Okay. It's a little bigger. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Do you prefer that I stay here or do I want to go to another spot? Is it good?
For a call, usually we keep people behind the table in case they get our rate. That's why I'm not, I'm not willing to risk right now.
See how it goes, I guess.
Yeah.
So, this project involves apartments and some limited retail, low-intensity retail usage, we just talked about, which would be located at the East Genesee and the Salinas Street entrances. It's parallel to Curtis Ave. Right now Curtis Ave connects those two corridors. This would be a potential second connection. The only connection between this development and Curtis Ave is a pedestrian walkway. When we previously came to the board and presented, we had a slightly different concept plan. This plan that you see now is a result of implementing the comments that we received from your board based on our last visit. The other thing that I should say is prior to coming to your board, this concept plan was presented to the Board of Trustees. And the Board of Trustees also provided comments. We've incorporated their comments as well. That's actually where the pedestrian connection to Curtis Road came from, for example. And also, the driveway coming from East Genesee Street being shared access for the former driveway, that was also a board comment. Now, I'll just briefly go through what's changed since the last meeting, and then we'll make ourselves available for questions. First, the issue that was discussed was parking. Initially, there was 1.2 parking places per unit. In this revised concept plan that you see, that number is up to 1.8 per unit. So there's 523 total parking spots. There's 312 units. Of those 312 units, 156 of them are one-bedroom and 156 of them are two-bedroom. So there are a total of 468 bedrooms and 523 spots. So, to repeat, there are more spots than bedrooms now. I know that was a big concern initially. The way that we achieved that was through adding additional parking spaces. We removed the existing building. The clubhouse is gonna be located in the center on the bottom, south end of this drawing. And, I'm sorry, center, bottom of the drawing, I should say. And we removed that, added some parking, added some parking on the top left of the curve there. And also, where the garages are, there's additional spaces so that if you buy a garage space, essentially like a driveway and parking space, park the garage. So there's parking here, too. We do not count in our parking totals any spots that would be associated with the future development blocks that you see on either side, or any of the spots associated with the leasing office/clubhouse, which you see on the right-hand side. Those are separate. Those spots are not counted in any of my totals, and those would be used for those other office space and retail uses. The second issue that was brought up was the issue of traffic calming. So, as we know, Curtis Ave currently connects Salinas Street and East Genesee Street, and so there's sort of a concern that this could be a cut-through, kind of how Curtis is, right? So, a couple things have been added to this plan that are traffic calming techniques to discourage its use as a cut-through. First, the two three-way intersections on either side would be stop sign-controlled three-way stop intersections, right? So there'd be stop signs in and out. In addition to the stop signs, this design includes five raised crosswalks that connect the pedestrian sidewalk areas. So those crosswalks should be raised like a speed bump, right? And as you can see from the drawing, they're fairly close together. They're really only 200 feet apart. So, we think that a combination of the intersection and then these raised crosswalks would really discourage any kind of speeding or utility of this road as a cut-through. That was a concern that was raised before. Also, prior, I think I alluded to this before, that in the center of the loop, near the bottom, where right now the word "two-way access drive type" is seen, that was the previous location of the clubhouse. That's been moved to a more central location. It's now the leasing office/clubhouse. That structure is seen on the Salinas Street side now instead. And hopefully that's a more optimum spot, you know, in terms of being centrality for the apartments. There was some discussion about whether or not that could be located in the middle of the loop. After studying that and looking at the massing, it wouldn't be an attractive addition to try to cram a building there. And so, we also, there's a desire to make sure that we have adequate stormwater management area. So, in the end, after studying that suggestion, it was seen as not optimum from an aesthetic or functional point of view. In addition, you'll note that there are two trash enclosure areas that are depicted. One on the left side, as near the access point from East Genesee Street, and the second one on the right side, near the access from Salinas Street. It was requested at the last meeting, too, in the concept plan, for that to be called out so people could see where it was. Another issue that was mentioned as part of our last discussion was whether or not there would be unfavorable visual impacts based on there being seven four-story buildings on the site. What we've done is we've taken four of those buildings and reduced them to three stories. So, those four buildings are the buildings closest to Curtis Ave, and so they have been reduced to three stories. The three buildings on the bottom of the site plan are still four stories. We think that by virtue of reducing those four buildings to four to three, there'd be a lot less chance for visual impacts. I'm gonna direct you to these elevations that we prepared. Now, I would say that these elevations, I think, are a really good representation of the architectural style, though we don't hold these out as visual impact simulations. They're not intended to be that. They're intended to give you a sense of what the architecture and the massing will look like. Later, there'll be visual simulations that more accurately depict, you know, what you would actually see from a receptor. But I do think, even though, given that disclaimer, if you flip to the fourth page in the packet that looks like this, I think this is a really good view that shows you the difference that you see from reducing the buildings to the three stories. So this is from the perspective of the pedestrian walkway, from the point of view of Curtis. So as you look at this drawing, you see that the screening that's depicted in the site plan is obviously effective. There's existing screening in the yards of, you know, the houses that are there, but there'd be an additional landscape barrier. And then you see a three-story building in the distance, and that's after you cross that landscaped area, after you go past the garages, after you go past the road, then in the distance, you see a three-story building. And then from this point of view, you can't even see the four-story buildings. They're so far on the other side of the property. We think the four-story buildings near the bottom of the page is an appropriate location for them, because again, there's fewer receptors there. They're much more distant from Curtis Ave. They're on the side of the property nearest the railroad tracks, where there's extensive existing vegetated screening. If you've ever walked around there, it looks like a jumbo. And so, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of our stormwater management area, you know, we're anticipating preserving a lot of those trees, the ones that aren't invasive species or dangerous or problematic. They'll all be preserved. So, as, you know, anyone familiar with the area knows, there's tons of screening on the bottom side of this property. So, we hope that's a favorable improvement based on the comments from the board. So, I'll stop there. We're, you know, pretty excited about the elevations. You know, we tried to give you a sense of what these buildings would look like with gabled roofs, porches, recessed façades, all these things intended to mimic the village's aesthetic and try to create an attractive, an attractive look for this development and one that fits, quite frankly, with the current architecture and uses. Obviously, things like colors and stuff like that could change and evolve, but we wanted to give you an idea of the front end. So, I'll stop there. Steve and I are open for questions. What we're hoping to get from this is a reaction to these changes that we made based on your comments. And if it's favorable, then we'll move on to the next step and provide you with much more detailed full site plan package. But before we got too far down that road, we wanted to make sure that this reflects what the board is looking for, because we see this process as collaborative and we're very interested in it.
I actually have a question about the environmental situation there. I mean, have you done any testing? That was an industrial site. It's a bronze and aluminum foundry there.
Yeah.
I don't know what you've done. I mean, is it safe, though, there, is there gonna be some remediation?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, it's zone industrial. In the past, it has been used for, you know, multiple different uses, including, like you said, a foundry. In terms of what environmental studies have been done on the property to date, Steve, are you able to comment on that?
We've only done the environmental assessment form. We haven't done soil testing yet. That would be part of it during the geotech. We'd wanna understand infiltration, wanna understand the soils that are on-site for stormwater management, foundation design, all of that. That would be into next.
Yeah. You know, bronze and aluminum.
Sure.
You can leave a lot behind.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a good question. And what I can say is, any residential development would require, from a, you know, a DEC point of view, once we do that and there's testing, if there's any reportable contamination of any kind, which we're not aware of at this point, we would have to report that to DEC from a mandatory point of view, and then we'd have to deal with that soil in an appropriate way. The DEC has, broadly speaking, three different levels of cleanup thresholds for residential, commercial, industrial. And we'd obviously be required by law to comply with all residential soil.
Because we're obviously aware that there's a risk involved.
Yes.
Along that same line with the stormwater, I know you're aware that the runoff from the Aspen Springs area comes to that site. Is what you have for stormwater management shown adequate for that, or you don't know yet?
We don't know the exact quantity yet. We have reached out, we talked to Chuck and Paula, just to go through preliminary utilities with him. We understand that there is off-site stormwater that we'll have to mitigate, design around.
I just said, I figured you didn't do that yet.
Not yet.
EER worked on this site a few years ago.
Yes.
And the storm redemption looks a lot larger in that plan than in here. So I just was trying to make sure that we're covering, and I assume this was a guesstimate at this point?
It is. And, but it's, so it's, what we're looking at is approximately 30,000 cubic feet for stormwater quality on the site, based on our preliminary review. And what we show is above that, in those dark green areas. So we're planning on some additional water quality on-site, but the exact calculation for what's coming in from off-site has not been.
Yeah, of course.
And I think, when you go and you walk it, you know, like walk the perimeter, the thing that sort of jumps out on the bottom of the drawing there, along the railroad tracks, it's very wet. That's just over, over the line. So there's some existing wet areas that, but those aren't. Without looking at the drawing, you would realize that's not really a property that's next to our.
It's on the next to the tracks.
Yeah. And we wouldn't change that. Whatever water's being conveyed in that current culvert, we're not gonna interfere with that.
Understood. I have a question about the trash. I know this is early, but I see you have two locations. Do you think that's enough for that many apartments?
Yeah, that's a good question.
And the other thing is, what about the bagging-in radius or the one that's towards Genesee Street? Does that work for the trash trucks? Or are you having dumpsters? Are you doing rollouts? How, I know it's early, but if we're talking about site plan, we have to plan for where those enclosures are gonna go.
Right. And I would say that level of detail, we're not planning for the exact size of the dumpster, the vehicle that's accessing them. These are more, we're planning on these areas, we would have trash enclosures.
I feel like that's not enough.
Not enough. So, but there's ample space there.
Yeah, because I don't think people are gonna drive their garbage over there, because they won't carry it.
Oh, no. So, that's a good question. These are managed sites, and our client has.
So you're gonna have rollouts in the maintenance room or something, and then someone asks us going to take them to the dumpster?
Correct. There'll be internal.
That was part of my question. And I said, are you showing rollouts? That's what I meant. Sorry.
Residents will not be walking their garbage. They'll be in the interior.
Okay. Trash rooms.
Sorry, misunderstood.
Okay. That's what I should've said. Rollouts, that's up here. Background showing, sorry. Let's see. Greg, did you have any comments about the traffic mitigation?
Well, I gave you guys the write-up we did last month, just because it's still, a lot of staying comments are still, you know, valid. They've made progress or, you know, made some changes, but these were all our primary concerns from last week, from last month.
And so, do you feel that the new changes are addressing any of those? Or is there more work to be done?
Well, I mean, in looking at it, we're still, we just don't like a quarter-mile of roadway with cars backing into it. It's still, to us, it's problematic.
Right.
And it's a quarter-mile on the top and a quarter-mile on the bottom. So, you know, we're concerned about that. And parking in front of garages, they, and I believe there's provision that codes says you can't sell parking, so, you know.
So, you're saying that anybody could park there?
Anybody should be allowed to park there. Or, it can be designated, but it's, it's gotta work out. But, you know, the parking really goes along the entire perimeter road, which is, you know, I mean, even from an aesthetic standpoint, you're gonna want to break that up if you were gonna, even allow them to back up. And, you know, 500 cars maneuvering around the site in the AM is not ideal to try and back up. That's one of them. The other ones, some are premature. The parking number, I think, is closer to what, and if you'd like, I can get you guys the parking generation from ITE, which gives you a range of what would be required on something like this. And it's lower than two, maybe, but, you know, it's more than one for this type of a development in this type of an area. There is wetlands supposedly on the site, so we can figure out where those are and how they're gonna be mitigated. They submitted a short form, EAF, a long form needs to probably be procured for the property sooner than later.
Okay.
It'll just give you a little deeper analysis of everything from trash to water to sewage to traffic, to what kind of soils are on here and wetlands. Because the wetlands, depending on how significant they are, whether they can be mitigated or whether they can't be, could, you know, have a significant impact on the site.
On the site plan?
New York State DOT needs to be consulted. You got another project coming out tonight that's in the general vicinity of this one here, at least on Route 31 side, that's probably gonna trigger some joint-type evaluation that'll need to be done. And then we're still, at some point in time, we're still gonna look at things like the water and sewer capacity for the site. We just did not, have not gotten into that just yet.
Okay. Anything else?
Other than what's on the list, I mean, the other stuff is pretty straightforward.
Okay. Do you have any questions about upgrades?
Yeah, I got a couple things I could add to that. So, with the wetlands, we're aware that there's previously delineated wetlands, but we're pretty confident that there's no hydraulic connection, any water to the United States. So given the change in the law this past summer, we don't really anticipate any issues there, but we'd be happy to provide letter support from a wetlands expert on that. So, long story short, there's a lot of wetlands that are delineated in the map that are no longer wetlands, because of what Supreme Court decided. This is, this is a poster shot for one of those, because it's not connected to the river or creeks. And then the parking, you know, we definitely hear with the engineers saying, we're very committed, though, to try to create something that mimics the village feel, right? We got street parking instead of vast lots. We're, you know, I've seen preliminary concept plans with big parking lots. We think that's not optimum in terms of the village aesthetic. So we've done this to try to maintain that, and that's our thinking, with having parking arranged the way that it is.
Okay. I personally feel that this layout isn't really indicative of the village, but that's my opinion.
Fair. I think it's more indicative than a large parking lot.
Yes. I have a question about, what you envision in terms of future retail development, these areas? That's funny. Do you have any idea, any envisioning?
So in terms of specific change or anything like that? No.
It's just gonna be empty space available for commercial purposes.
Right. We follow all existing.
So that'd be another thing that I have to deal with.
Yeah, all existing zones. We wouldn't be seeking new experiences. We're not trying to drive new, just insisting on it, yeah.
Just to follow up on the wetlands, we have submitted the jurisdictional determination to the court, so we're working through that process.
Okay. All right. I think we're gonna be really interested in landscaping plans, too, when you get to that point. Again, I know it's early. I was wondering what you're envisioning with the two-way access drive with female supply?
Right. So, there's preference expressed by those board to have that, have that access, have them share that access, so we would grant perhaps access easements to them so that they wouldn't have to be pulling off of East Genesee Street anymore. There is some interest from them on that, because it would result, right now, the middle of their parking lot is encumbered by easement benefiting this parcel, so we could extinguish that easement.
And the drives-through between the building and the propane thing out there.
So it's better for everybody. You wouldn't have trucks queuing off of Genesee Street to get in a parking lot anymore, now they can come on this private drive. You know, the only concerns we've heard is to make sure there's enough of, enough width with that driveway to accommodate trucks to give their deliveries. We're committed to complying with that every way, to give them, to give them enough there. And, yeah, I think it would be an upgrade, honestly, from the current situation.
Yeah, because if you let them to come in off Genesee Street and then make a right into their parking lot with the tractor-trailers maybe tight?
And we've been talking about running the maneuvers for it, to make sure that they can do that. I understand that they can manage it now, and we're improving it, we're not making it worse. It does look tight, I know that.
I mean, right now, they come off Genesee Street.
Turn off of Genesee Street, I'm not worried about it. Right now, they have all pavement there, so that's easy for them to normally get in that drive over the curb. I'm talking about actually coming in Genesee Street and then right-hand turn into their existing lot.
We know we're gonna have to give them enough of a radius. Now, we're not gonna.
Have you had conversations with them?
We have. There's interest.
I guess somebody from there was maybe gonna be here tonight, but I don't see them.
There's no agreement or commitment, but there's interest there.
Okay.
I mean, one thing we can't solve is right now, they're coming off Genesee Street to get back out, they gotta J-turn, and we can't do anything about that. But we can get them turning in, not off Genesee Street, but off the private drive, if you think is a good one.
Okay.
Now, just real quick, I like the raised crosswalks. I understand, do you feel that that actually mitigates, like, people cutting?
I understand, do you feel that that actually mitigates, like, people cutting through? Because I only see that that's only going to slow people down. But compared to that light, that's still 10 times quicker.
Yeah. So, that's a really good question. So, we, so these sort of traffic calming devices make it slower, right? So, it discourages people from doing it. We think it's by virtue of adding these, and not one, but two, three-way stop sign intersections, make it a lot slower than Curtis or something like that, right? So, I think it, you know, it, those traffic calming devices, I think, really do discourage that by making it a slower, two stops, basically, you know, five speed bumps. You know, it's, it's, that's the intent of it.
Remind me what your target market is for these apartments?
The plan is for these to be market apartments.
Right.
Yeah. So, who, you know, this is going to be a little more anecdotal than anything, but in working on these projects all over the county right now, there's a lot of these, there's desire from people who are older who want to stay in a community in age and place, but it's maybe not appropriate for them to be mowing their lawn, have two-story houses, that kind of thing. So, there's tremendous interest from that regard. Younger people who can't afford homes, don't want to stay in the community and, you know, begin their lives here. Young professionals perhaps. So, there's a variety. You know, these could be one and two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
Not larger than that, not studios. And they'll be market rate.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Just, yeah, just one about the salon street entrance. I know originally you guys had the clubhouse, kind of with that existing concrete pad adjacent to the railroad track. I see it's pushed over there. On the rendering, it looks like it's just a lot, so I'm assuming that it would be actually in this space that's currently vacant in this.
Yeah. So, the path, the footprint you see there is an existing building. So, just by virtue of context for everybody.
The old dairy.
Who wasn't here. Yeah. The old, where it was before was right up against the train tracks, right? That's an existing building.
Right.
And it was expressed at the last meeting, well, that's off the close to the houses for the clubhouse. So, we got rid of that. So, now we moved it, you know, so where it's further away from existing residential uses. That path, that footprint that you see is an existing building. Now, we don't anticipate that's going to be enough space for the whole leasing office and clubhouse. It's going to be a bigger footprint. But we just are depicting an existing structure there. We're going to try to repurpose as much of that structure as we can, but that won't house all that because it's not a big. So, we're, it's going to be bigger than that.
Are you putting in a pool?
No.
Do you envision any additional parking for the clubhouse over in that area?
Yeah, yeah. So, there would be parking on that side, you know, in the, where the future commercial development block is and where it says leasing and construction office, clubhouse, that area will have parking.
And so, it could be tight.
What's that?
It could be tight. It looks like to get the parking in.
I don't know.
Yeah. I think the footprint is the existing building. I think once we size that appropriately, but the white space that you see there is the, would be the open pavement area. So, I think there is ample room to efficiently design a parking lot there.
Okay. I don't know much bigger you need to make the clubhouse.
We can move into the orange area.
Okay. So, you're looking at two more commercial, I know it's not on, but two more commercial build arts up there on Salina. And then what's happening down on Route 31? Because I know one of the properties you didn't have under control when you were last here, right?
Yeah. On Route 31, there's still one house that is not under control. We've had initial talks with the owner. The takeaway from those talks, as I understand it, is they want to see, you know, get a little further along before we get that under contract.
And is that, is that one that's not under contract shown in the orange block?
It is in the orange block.
Okay. So, that's really larger than currently is under your control? This orange block is one of those?
Yeah. This orange block, one portion of the orange block on Route 31 is an existing house that we don't control.
Okay. It's right next to that one. Sorry. I go by there a lot. Anybody else? No? Nothing? Any more questions for us?
Yeah. Our only question is if there's any, any more concept plan changes before we go to that next level of detail of site plan. We'd love to care, but if there's nothing else from the board, we really appreciate your time and attention.
Brody, did you have a chance to look at the floor area ratios that are in our code? And do these, does this work? I mean, I haven't looked at it myself yet.
You and I had a conversation about that early on.
Yeah.
That they, they don't work mathematically. Yeah. So, you could, under the, the way it's written, under the current floor ratio, you couldn't have a two-story building. So, I don't think that was the intention. I think there's an error there in the code.
I didn't read that. Good, two-story buildings.
No, I'm saying that the, that the floor area ratio doesn't work at all for almost anything. I guess we have to look at that.
Right.
You're going to have to look at that.
We couldn't get to, no one could get to two stories under there.
You two work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you listening to our previous comments. So, Terry, what's the fair action plan right now on this?
They're going to go back and further develop it based on the initial comments in order to make sure that they were going in the right direction before they develop course. Was the, what they said at the beginning.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I believe, is Gentry Drive concept with Mr. Ashley.
Yeah.
Like to come forward and introduce yourself to the.
Apologize for not having more drawings for you. Last time I was here, we were able to use the television and do some things. It was kind of cool. Let's see. I'm Carly Ashley. I'm now a resident of the Alvin Building. Last time I was here, I was in my own property, but then I moved into 127 Hunter and it's adjacent to the parcel we're talking about now. Previously, I worked in the village before, early 90s, developed Cambray Ridge. So, been before you. I don't remember how many of you were sitting here last time I was here and made the presentation. I think council was and engineering is the same.
I understand.
Okay. So, but essentially, I apologize for backing out for a couple of years. It turned out that winter, my wife's illness progressed and she passed. So, I put, put a few things on hold for a while. Got that, hit it. So, doing that, and interestingly, through that timeline, another change occurred. In the last month, I've been able to acquire a strategic piece of land from the Arvinger State that allows to extend Hunter where we couldn't do that before because we wouldn't sell it.
That corner.
That corner, the strip, PC had there, spike strip is all I could call it because it had no other purpose but to keep Hunter Road from extending and continuing through.
Yeah. So, that's, can I interrupt you with that?
Absolutely. Anything you like.
This drawing by everybody?
Yeah.
And down here in this corner.
Next to Seminary.
There's, there's kind of a dark black line. It's a slice across the corner of, right over here, of Hunter. Okay. I got that.
Yeah. The next time, we'll have full-size drawings and then be able to do it.
See that? Yeah. So, that was the lot line and this, this property here prevented this road from going through to Hunter.
Right. So, the previous drawing had us looping inside and then coming out with another curb cut out onto the E-grade.
Right, Gentry.
On the Tappin through a 54-foot piece is part of the parcel on Tappin. You know, that was the original thing. But I was going to come back with the same drawing and just get back at it. And then I looked at this and played with the sketches and personally, I think it works better. Really, that's why I'm here tonight. Which way do I go, you know, with it is really what I'm looking to find out. They're conforming lots in both cases. We're looking at, going into 7,500 square foot lots with 75-foot frontage. They have that. Residential use is what we're going to do with the footprint. And so, I've got a couple of concepts I want to tap into about. But the lots themselves conform and that's why I, but I think it's just a smoother traffic pattern and everything else coming, coming just extending Hunter rather than looping inside the parcel. Last time we were here, I think we determined that the sewers were capacity. We had to look at the sizing of pumps and things like that mechanically to make sure that that could do. But the sewer that's there, we've had to gravity feed to. And then the fourth main was built sufficient to take care of this project that we had looked at. We looked at again, I'm sure. I'm still working with fung engineering. Julian is still on board, talking, as recently as yesterday. So, the team's basically the same, just coming up and looking at which concept the board thinks is more suitable. I personally like the idea of extension. That's where I like to go. It actually has a one lot greater yield, quite a bit less road construction. And then that dedication cost, of course, could affect the village as well. And the lots closest to the river actually are large enough. I think we can house on-site detention, silitation we're going to need as we engineer that out because they're a little bit larger. Looks like there might be enough room there. In the passing, I also acquired two pieces that are, go down to the river next to Dale Walden, between my parcel at 127 Hunter and Dale Walden's piece, the other Arvinger piece. It's river frontage. I've acquired that as well. So, I've got a little more flexibility as far as where and how we work drainage and, you know, because I've got a couple of extra acres that are contiguous that we might be able to work with if need be. So, it'll help engineering. Julia was pleased, actually, to see that.
So, you're still looking at coming in through Gentry?
Right.
And out Hunter?
Correct.
Okay. So, the last time you were here, we determined that Gentry was not a village street?
Yeah. We, that is where we left it. We weren't sure and that was where the question, that's what it was. And in the last month, I gone in.
These are just the same comments from last time.
Great.
I thought I was reviewing this plan. I didn't realize it was this new one.
Yeah.
Well, he's looking at either one, but.
Yeah. That's, right. And appreciate it. What was the question?
I just was, Gentry, as far as.
Yeah. Right.
As far as I know, is not village-owned. It's a private.
And that's, and that's where I talked to code enforcement that was in there. He looked through and he looked at his thing and he brought up and he said, yeah, I saw that. And he feels that the section of Gentry from Tappin down to the T is the villages, but from the T across where the actual residences are is private. That was what he's, his determination was based on the, based on what he had. I said, okay, and I'll go in and I'm sure this is going to come.
From which T?
Yeah. As you, as you come in.
From here to, to Tappin?
No, no, no. As you go down, so the piece coming, coming from Tappin.
Here.
Going north up to the T, that's the riverfront lots, the existing homes.
Okay.
That section, he says, is ours. We own it, we maintain it. And the piece that's from.
What do you think, Chuck?
I find it hard to believe that the court would say that. They may say that, but there is a problem with the street.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely. So, we'll get to it. Yeah. Yeah. We were there before. I bet you're hot to fix it.
Yeah. Because we can't, we can't grant the access to Gentry.
Right.
Because you need two points of entry-exit, as we all know, for fire and so forth.
And I think that if, if it's, right, if it's not owned by the village, I think my deed has it in there. So, you know, but it's, you know, it's, so.
Okay.
You know, as far as who owns the land, as far as who maintains existing. This new proposal uses, obviously, for road frontage, the lots facing Gentry would need to be there.
Because you're going to put driveways off of Gentry to those lots.
You know, alternative drawing, if that's not the case, would be for me to go and come in Hunter and go out on the Tappin and just circumvent and have the lots back up to Gentry, which would be awkward. You know, I don't, I don't think it's best. So, I'd like to solve it another way, but if I can't, you know.
Sorry to be dense. Is it this area that, that we think might be public?
Gentry. Gentry is.
Like here?
No. Running down here.
Gentry is private.
Might be public. Oh, yeah. Where are we? Yeah. So, this piece here, this is the, this is, oh, here's the road. This is private. This 11, 1200 feet is public, is what I was told when I went into codes.
I guess we, I guess we need to really.
Yeah. And that's, you know, and that's exactly where we were when we broke off last time. We needed to address that.
Right. And that's literally the threshold.
The history that I'm aware of from 20 years ago is it's private.
All of Gentry.
Yeah. And all of the people that access it apparently have an easement or rights or something.
There is some sort of a right-of-way down there.
Yeah.
But it's not a, it's not a, it's not a village, you know.
Right. It's not a village street. Which is exactly where we were the last.
Yeah. Now, my understanding is you're maintaining it because the pump station's down there. Are you plowing?
Correct.
So, it's, yeah.
People have to, they have to, they have to. They have to get, the village has to get to the pump station. So, that's why it's.
That's why it got taken care of.
Accidentally plowed.
So, the people who look at the end of Gentry have easements over.
Yeah. I haven't looked at all their titles.
Something like that.
I, I, but, you know, well, that's.
It's probably owned by all of, owned collectively.
And there, it's not on their title, but it's, it's not accepted out on my, my deeds. My title, my abstract doesn't show anybody having access with me. So, yeah.
Those would be very interesting if they could straighten it out. We'd be very interested.
Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that'd be a great time to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. I know there's an issue.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's that issue.
Yeah, don't know, don't know how to do that. I'm, I'm sure it's not a, I, you know, I've done this before, and I, you know, this is not something I've run across before, so I don't have an answer.
Well, it seems, it seems to me, I mean, that we're literally at a threshold issue. There needs to be two accesses.
Yes.
Gentry is not a town road.
Correct.
So a plan needs to be developed that either has you building part or some of a town road to get the accesses you need. I am certainly not a designer of, of plots, but that someone needs to look at this plan, and now that we're sitting here, and Chuck is saying, "That's not a village street," so what plan would you?
How do we make it one? If I don't own all of it, it has to be a collective thing and, you know.
Yeah, because you own, if, if you, do you own it, you own.
I think I own three-quarters of it from where my lines are, you know.
Right, but, right, but you need to make some kind of a village road, right?
And I don't know what specifications are in place now as far as what's there. Um, you know, where I, where I'm coming in, I've probably got three hundred feet or so coming off of Tappan that I, I had expected would, you know, where, where I tie in, I expect to make that all conforming. And then frankly, where I was gonna put the lots coming off of Gentry to the north of my access, I was just gonna put curb cuts off of what's there. Um, you know, change that road, I don't know.
I don't, I, you'd have to, I don't, I mean, I don't think the village board would accept dedication of that road without it being to the village's standards.
I don't know what standard it's to at this point, that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it looks pretty.
Well, it's not, it's not to there.
It's not to the standards currently.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that, um, I, I think that's what you need to do is that.
Well, and part of it is also talking to, and I have already started, it's not a negotiation, but it's a dialogue with the, uh, with the folks at the cemetery, because part of where the existing pavement is, is on there. Okay, it crosses the line. If we wanna keep the road where they, where it is currently and not remove it and move it, you know, um, I can't build on what I don't control.
On your lot, you need to figure out how to have real village roads.
And there's enough, there's enough room on there. I think the, I think the existing, he's right away, I've got sixty feet coming in. What it would mean is probably abandoning the existing road and putting a new one in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly, and this is precisely where we were. Um, if that's what's needed, I'll, I'll look into that and, and, you know, the next level design will be there. I know we.
Right, well, I mean, Julian will be able, you know, he's, certainly is going to be able to look at this.
Yeah, and we'll look at.
Now that you know that's.
I don't have proper radius in there, but I guess the question comes in for me as we're taking it to the next level, is, is, is it preferable to the board coming in and extending Hunter versus the, the other configuration? The previous configuration that.
I mean, it's.
Not Tappan.
That includes Tappan and.
Both of them bring, bring up the concern of the width, and they're both under sixty feet. Uh, I would have to look at it, maybe talk to Chuck and see what kind of utilities, if anything, would be down there, come down there, so we can see if we got enough room. Um, you know, I don't know, for, you know, five percent, well, one is sixty, but a lot of the, the, well, and coming down that road.
Yeah, I know there's water coming down currently. Sewer wouldn't be. And I've got sixty feet, actually, coming off of Hunter, so.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah.
This, this looks narrow, so.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah, I thought, that was, that was the other part of that. There's fifty-six, you're right, we would need, we had talked about that in the Tappan thing, but if you look here, it's a bigger scale, it's, maybe it's hard to see as well, but you look sixty feet here, so. So we're maintaining sixty feet all the way around that. So the sixty feet's in play at this point.
So that, that sort of stuff would need to be really addressed.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, does Gentry, Gentry being a dead end, sort of, you know, down there, that may be an issue with the fire department or something, maybe not, um, because it needs some kind of turnaround or something. But I think those are the, those are the issues.
I think there's a, there is a turn on the cemetery purse, of course, and I, I think they use that as an access, I don't know. Um, I know, I know a new house just went up down the end of there, but.
Okay, so I think there's a lot of legal access ownership right-of-way.
Well, I, I just need to know what, you know, what and where, and when I heard something contrary to our previous, you know, type of code that's happened so and.
Yeah, at this, at this point, I.
Put the light on, see what we got.
Without Gentry drive being figured out, we can't.
No, no, I understand.
Comment at all, except for.
Well, I guess my answer, my answer to that is if I need to put Gentry in, I'll, I, I don't know, I'll have to put Gentry in. Um, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's it, I'm hoping I can work something out.
If you can work that out legally, that would work.
Well, it's, I, I got the road, the land to do it. It would mean abandoning and shifting, and I'm sure there's a couple of people down there with their, with their barns, you know, there's, there's some structures there that were built maybe without permit existing. Um, so, you know, so, I mean, you know, I can build, it's just, you mean, I watch for.
But it sounds to me like you have to sort that out, and you have to sort it out with all the other people that are gonna use.
No, no, I understand.
The road down there. And then, now we can talk, because if you can't resolve that, no matter what you do, it's going to change your layout and your plan, so.
Yeah.
I think I work at resolving those issues first before you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Figure out your lot layout.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, Gentry will fit inside the lot layout I've got, so it's just, because I have, I have.
Who controls it and.
Well, I control enough to build my own, on my own. It means abandoning the part that's now currently partly on mine and partly on the cemetery.
Okay, so we're gonna have two roads right next to each other, and yours will be.
Well, I, I think once the second one gets, then once the new one that's going to be deeded and dedicated over the village comes over, I think somebody's coming by with a, with a dump truck and some, you know, excavator and.
Peel it up.
Peel it up, make it go away.
This is.
Yeah, you don't need to.
Right.
And we're talking about probably a twenty-foot shift.
Yes.
It's not, we're not, you know, part of the existing bed will still be in play or in use. It's not, we're not talking about a monumental shift here.
They're gonna give it to them.
So.
Do you, is your lot line?
Like two hundred and ten people.
Up at the edge of the Gentry, does this show the lot line?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the lot line runs right down.
Right through the middle?
Almost middle of the road, yeah. That's what it's at there, well, then, and then, there we go, no, we're quicker.
I couldn't tell it the way it goes over like this, is the, the lot line or not.
Looks like he's got some.
Yeah.
Discon markers on it, those and.
Again, larger scale, it'll be a whole lot easier for folks, I apologize for that, but we'll look.
Okay, we're making it work.
Yeah, my cheater.
Appreciate it, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the thing, that's the thing.
You have any other questions for anybody else?
Um, no, not really. Um, a couple of things I do intend to do, and just so you've got a, a flavor for where I'm going, what it is, I've talked to a lot of people, the, the village, you know, businesses and so on, they're, they're excited about it. What I'm looking to do is, is create a place that people can age in place. Um, looking at, the footprint with the seventy-five hundred foot lots makes it difficult, because people want two-car garage, eats up too much of it. Um, so really, what I'm looking at is kind of a barn minimally idea, um, and I floated that with a lot of people, and they're excited about it, where we have basically the first floor being garage and storage space, and having elevators taking you up, so you've got a ranch on top of it. Kind of a ranch concept, but the idea of having stair and elevator, and all of a sudden you can age in place, you can have your carly come in and out, you can still have your boats and cars until you can't use them anymore, um, which is, you know, so.
Put in a limited access use elevator and.
Exactly, yeah, limited access use elevator, so that, that people can age in place. The other thing, I'm talking to National Grid and seeing if I can't, uh, create a community geothermal grid system. Um, so we tie in, so we tie in electric field, uh, geothermal heat.
Okay.
So if I'm putting in roads and things like that, I'll put the wells into capacity, and basically the homeowner will tie into either a homeowner association or if National Grid is the provider, then it'll just be their maintenance, and there is no maintenance per se, but just, uh, something I'm looking, trying to do, hopefully, hopefully it works, makes sense, because it does make sense.
Yeah.
It's actually, that's actually a system that can make sense without subsidies today, but, um, hope it can work, give a shot. If it can't, then we'll, we'll go.
Hey, well, thank you for stopping by.
We'll get to that, and I, I expect, I'll, I'll try and get with Julian and get something scrambled for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Baldwin'sville Housing at Nineteenth Phillips Street. Would you like to come forward, introduce yourself?
Who's that? Thank you. I was very close to you.
So I'm Michael Charles from Benchmark Development. Uh, we just wanted to introduce ourselves and the conceptual overview of the project that we're planning for Phillips Street, listen to initial feedback from you guys, and then kind of our way into process. Benchmark is a regional development company based in Western Massachusetts. We do our work mostly about a three or four-hour radius from Western Mass. We've been doing work in the Verona area, Southern Beach area, probably for the last five or six years. We have additional projects planned in that area, and then, uh, also looking at some additional projects around Baldwin'sville area. Uh, this project is a multi-family, market rate multi-family project. It's a hundred and seventy-six units and a variety of building types. Most of them are sort of smaller in scale, townhouse-type projects, tight townhouse-type buildings. The objective with these is really to have, most of the buildings have, to have doors and access right to grade versus a traditional apartment building. There is one larger building on the site that is a, a traditional double-loaded corridor building, but most of them are townhouse-type buildings. Uh, the plan really is, uh, to have a combination of one- and two-bedroom units, um, at a variety of different price points, but within that market rate level. Um, I think that plant, the site plan that we have laid out there shows you a key with, you know, sort of quads, some doubles. I think the exact layout will, will vary a bit as we sort of work on parking, and we work on massing, uh, and we work on amenities. Typically, from a multi-family standpoint, you know, we're targeting, there's obviously different places you can target in the market, we're targeting people who want to be close to downtown, uh, not right in the downtown, but also in somewhat of a more rural wooded setting. So in this case, this is a heavily wooded site with a lot of small trees on it, actually. By the time we would be done, we would wanna actually replant and re-landscape in order to create sort of a, in, in order to maintain that look and feel, residential look and feel of the neighborhood. That's also the direction that we're taking with buildings, smaller scale, two- and three-story buildings. So even the three-story building is really more of a New England-type building where you might have, uh, a third story in the dormers, for instance. So if you have front-facing gables and, and shed dormers, um, that would kind of give you a three-story building, but not have the mass and scale of a, of a large building. And then a lot of the other buildings are two-story buildings. And again, uh, the general look and feel is a gable designs, you know, New England, upstate New York-type designs. I, we included in there a couple of representative standards of building types. Uh, the first couple pages are really more of a townhouse-type, which are units that run in a line, and there might be anywhere from, you know, five to six or seven units in a line. And again, those are all doors landing on, you know, landing grade. Um, there's other types of buildings that would be sort of more square-type buildings, where you might have a fourplex with, uh, building, you know, units in the corners. So part of it is trying to take advantage of the site layouts and also trying to have a little bit of variability in the building designs and types. Um, in terms of the architecture, uh, again, it's typically gonna be clavoured-type buildings, wood trim, unifying white trim, a light color trim, and pretty standard kind of pastel-type colors, you know, clavoured siding, whether that's wood or cementaceous siding, it's obviously gonna look like traditional materials. We want it to be maintenance-free, though, so certainly we use things like Borrel as a type of product, or Hardy plank, we use that a lot. Um, and then in terms of amenity packages, you know, things like a clubhouse that has workout facilities, um, you know, obviously playgrounds, uh, things like yoga platforms have been pretty popular in some of the projects that we've done, just seating areas to take advantage of, you know, quiet wooded areas. So it's not a huge site, so some of that is just gonna be interesting landscape design. Uh, part of our team is Kevin Larry Freeman, they're the civil and landscape design team. So we're certainly not at that stage right now where we've identified things like the exact amenity package and, and even materials of sidewalks and driveways and that kind of thing, but, but the objective is to properly park it, not overpark it, distribute parking so that it's not seized parking, uh, and I think the layout of multiple smaller buildings helps us with that. Um, so that's, that's really the overview of the project. Um, I don't know, Christian, if you have anything to say as far as.
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump in and kind of go five hundred feet, just do kind of some site stats, so we all, we're a little more familiar with the parcel. So it's Nineteenth Phillips Street, where is that? It's O'Nida Street and Phillips, it's fifteen point one-nine acres, so it's pretty sizable. We're located just across the street from the Candlewood Project, um, which is also a multi-family development. This is currently in R1 district, so what we're proposing would require, we're anticipating a PDD, and that's based on conversations we've had initially with the town, but we obviously want to have buy-in in your communication before we commit to that. Um, and then, yeah, that's our referral from the village board to here. Um, in terms of the PDD standards, we're over the ten acres required, um, we'll, we'll hit the floor ratio. We're not even close to the max lot coverage, and kind of what Michael was saying about this idea of, you know, the quality of this site being this wooded, lush kind of experience of living here, it's going to have to maintain that for a couple of reasons. Number one, there's a lot of tree cover, we can't take all of it out. Number two, this site currently has, I'm gonna call it, um, like an hourglass shape, and in the middle of that hourglass shape, there's this big chasm, um, it's, it's kind of a lower part, and those, that part of the site is very difficult to develop because of the grating alone. So we're sort of limited, upwind, uh, location. We've, we've looked at the grading, so this plan has a little bit of metric to it, in that we've looked at the grading, we've thought about how frames will lay out. So that lower kind of funnel-shaped area will be greased, no matter what. Um, setbacks, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely adhere to all the setbacks. The chart that I've thrown on here is R2, so it's what Candlewood has, and we're just mimicking that as a metric, so that we can say, we're meeting this standard, because we understand with PDD, we're kind of deciding what exactly those standards will be. Um, so we will meet all the R2 standards for sure. Um, in terms of building height, the only one we really have to worry about is that multi-family, um, in terms of it being sizable, um, height, and we've looked to place that in a, in a space on the site that we can easily buffer it with richer trees and then kind of a tiered down here, smaller block. Uh, one thing we added that we didn't have in our initial was sidewalks, we, we want sidewalks, we want interconnectivity, we've thought about crosswalks, and we've thought about kind of pedestrian scale, so we're getting through that stuff without getting into the weeds, but we just wanted to kind of present something to you that, that had a quality and feel of what we were looking to do in the future. Oh, I got it.
Okay.
Can we talk about that lot to be subdivided, designed by others?
That's part of the parcel right now, and the seller would like us to be able to carve off a small lot that he can do a, a two-family on. So for us, that's.
Is it zoned for two-family?
I, I don't know what it's zoned for, frankly, but, um, our, we said we would take it as far as we can, and if it's possible, and everybody agrees with it, we're fine helping him in doing it. Um, but if it's not possible, then it, it doesn't become part of the plan, and it's, it's not actually part of our plan, it's just a subdivision thing, so.
Jimmy, I don't believe it is, because I believe it's R1.
It's a one-family?
I think it's R1, which would say it would have to be changed.
So.
So you pursue that separately. We're just identifying it in case there's any issues related to frontage, like, you know, some minimum frontage was required, and that somehow stopped us from doing our project, because we didn't have that frontage, then, then that wouldn't be possible.
I mean, right now, it can only be built in for a single family.
Right.
I, I doubt there would be much interest in their, in a zone change for that. Um, so that's just something, I suppose you might want to translate.
Yeah, I'd relate that concept to him, and he can decide what must to do with it.
Where is Parkway coming to this?
I'm sorry?
Parkway, that's, so off of Phillips Street, there's a street up from O'Nida. Is that, it, it doesn't look like, uh, where you're coming out to Phillips Street is going to congruent with Parkway.
This one here, I'm gonna check that. The last time somebody came in with this, it.
It was right, it was lined, like Pine Street lined right up, and Parkway lined straight up. That's, I'm just trying to see brightly where you're at.
Right, straight across.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so we should show that.
So that is straight across from that?
From this, this entry?
Yeah, this entry, that, because just looking, that's gotta be, that's, that's gotta be further down than, I was thinking Pine, Parkway.
I can't remember the name of the street, I'm assuming that's Parkway.
Parkway.
It's gotta be directly across from, from Pine Street. And we did receive the note that you just gave earlier with the, with these initial points, I don't, I don't see an issue with any of them, obviously.
They're kind of broad and, you know, I mean, I, and then, you know, you, the, some of the parking here, I actually, it's easy enough to work around it.
Right.
I don't, I don't mind this, this doesn't bother me, okay, it's mainly like the more Okay, it's mainly like the more to main.
Right. And early enough in the process, obviously.
Yeah, I don't see a moving those around easy, you know. I didn't see anything on here with steel pillars, a little worried about just the stormwater.
We will.
It should be the elephant in the room in every project, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger.
Worth it we say the word.
So this, this project, as Greg was just saying, it's about the same size as the last one, but, and the units are substantially less.
It's much less dense.
Much less dense.
So we should let them put more on that.
Just by way of comparison, like what we're...
Our coverage, our lot coverage is thirty...
Thirty percent.
Yeah, we're at thirteen and a half. And like I said, part of that's because of this big green belt that goes across, that's low when it's eaten to that, so we...
I'm not sure that they actually...
They would. All the previous times, I'm sure they did.
I mean, this location also obviously lends itself to slightly less dense type configurations in a neighborhood, you're trying to build within a neighborhood and not stand out like a sore thumb, trying to mix in.
The other ones, like I was going to say, so this looks better.
Is this market rate?
Yes.
So, plus side, I like that it's less dense. I like that it, the arrangement of the parking lots, if you guys get, see that, is, is much more residential, much more like a village street that's important to us. I like that you're keeping all of the green space, again, extremely important, the green space. Your preliminary landscaping plan, I like all of the trees. I do not care for the three story garage below building if your rendering is, is accurate to the, to what that might look like this one.
The only, well, if you actually look at the last page, which looks like a taller building, so the difference would be that looks like a three story building with a cap on it, whereas what we would be doing is what looks like a two story building with a cap on it.
So this is a three story with a clear story?
Yeah, that, that is more similar to what we're talking about, that there's a third story in the roof.
And that would be where the orange one is?
Actually, all of them would have that kind of a configuration. So even if it was a two story building, it would look more like a one story with a cap, you know, with a roof.
Okay.
I think the location of the larger...
So is this one going to show up there somewhere?
Right, no. So that, what we're getting at is more the idea of a square building versus a linear building.
Yeah, okay.
And the layout being doors on, around the building versus doors along the front, so. You don't like that?
No, not at all.
That's good, you've just got to push the limits and find out.
We don't need it all back.
No, we like reacting.
But the other thing about the building in the back is that is lower.
Yes, the looks of these are, you know, residential in feel and so forth. We might talk about the architecture and the placement, obviously, when you get there. Am I understanding this one correctly in that this is an entry door to the, to this unit and then, does this go to the third floor?
Yeah.
And this is the entry door to...
There might, like, that might be an entry door to a first floor unit and then you may have another door that is an entry to a stairway that gets you to two upper units.
To two and three.
Yeah. And in some cases, there might be, two and three might be one unit. So there might only be a stairway that gets you to the second floor and then within the unit, you go to the third.
So these are just little dormer rooms, so it would be like a bedroom under that?
Yes, exactly. I just was struggling a little bit with the door configuration and I wasn't sure earlier if this was two or three stories, but I was guessing.
Yeah, so that, that is a three story configuration and try to have all this, well, we wouldn't have all the stairs internal to the building.
Okay, and, and these are two?
That's the same.
Well, no, that's not a three story.
It is, it's, yeah, that's a two story with the second story essentially being in the roof, so you see how it's not like, like we're bringing the use down a little bit to try to bring the massing and the building down.
We applaud that. Anybody else? I've been doing all the talking. We're still talking about traffic studies, obviously.
Right. Traffic studies will have to prove out.
Right, and it needs to be some conjunction with other development, it's great mention that's going on.
DOT is going to buy it.
Yes.
At least we're like Pine and where'd it come out to, 31, and with the other one, 31 is going to be...
Charlie, as he's walking out, I asked if we're using Gordon, we're using Gordon, so it's the same traffic as old. So we'll be in touch with that, make sure that this study is uniform and...
Okay, so I know, Greg, you had comments on the last traffic study.
The one that was done for this and last time, that wouldn't be valid, I mean, it was done, they, well, yeah, they were trying to jam it whatever.
Yeah, we don't do that, all areas, schools in session will be in the first two sentences.
But the board may want also, instead of letting DOT make, you know, their assessment determination in the vacuum, the board may want to be part of that discussion.
Okay.
Instead of trying to just let them do whatever they want and come back with a letter.
And how do we do that?
I'll just tell them that...
I just need a volunteer?
Yeah, I'm taking a volunteer and then, you know, me and the volunteer say maybe, you know, go to meetings or, you know, be in a loop or something.
Okay, I think that would be very beneficial.
So can you explain that to me again? Are you saying...
Well, we'll do that, I mean, we'll, we'll send a letter to DOT requesting our involvement with the entire process as it goes through. And that way, everybody's on board at the same time, you know, but by the time they come down with their determination, comments, whatever, mitigation, that sort of thing, you know, the board here will at least have had an idea of what was going on and why everything was getting done.
Sort of embedded in the process.
Yeah, yeah. Try to, make sure that it's coming in with something that we like.
No, I think that's important, thank you very much.
Unofficial coordinator review?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it'd be a little more than just coordinated, but I don't necessarily just want a letter from them saying they're good or, you know, force things off.
I mean, like the official coordinator.
You know, because I mean, it's, you know, we, we just need to deal with the traffic in the village anyways and...
Yep, understood.
Yes.
I mean, knowing a lot with the last project, I know a lot of the residents were concerned. So already, the high school down, just down, it just pipes every, you hear everything, you know, and so a lot, you know, you already hear it loud enough and now you've removed, and again, like you, at least you did kind of, those are not mature trees, those were already cut down about ten to more than about 15 years ago. They went, cleared every single...
Along this...
This, this whole property.
Oh, okay.
The owner had everything, every black walnut tree removed, and that's all that's left is some pretty weak dead and there, so the green that's there is not very substantial.
And some of it is just...
It's overgrowth.
So it's in the top versus being down where you want it to be obscuring, you should...
So that's, you know, that was one concern that was big was just the amount of noise that comes through and now that you've removed so much that it just, it was a lot of noise piped through.
Right, right.
Thoughts on mitigating that off the top of your head?
I mean, one of the majors, Ben, you know, he said it's small, thin materials, so we'll be putting back in place immediately, it wouldn't be thick hardy stuff, but eventually it would be. So are we thinking, you know, are we planning this for the short term or for the long term and the short term? Those shrubby trees will get a little bigger and then they'll die, we could keep those or we could invest in, you know, doing a multi-tiered planting plan. So sometimes, and what I like to do, and boards don't ask me to, I just have a vested interest in trees, is instead of planting everything as an oak tree, that'll be really nice in 200 years, you plant some tulip trees and some red maples, some fast growing guys that in the first two to three years will go, you know, three feet, four feet, six feet of growth in the first three years versus something slow growing. So if you do both of those things, you really can't have it both ways, so that's what I would speak to.
Doing the understory stuff. And in some place, in some places too, we'll do kind of like sections of, sections of fencing that are not like stockade fencing, fencing that you can see through in a sense.
Like a louver.
Create, yeah, I mean, it's like board and baton kind of stuff, missing the baton, so that, you know, it creates a little bit of a sound barrier, doesn't lock you in and feel like you're right up against the fence, but it's a visual break. And if you do then like in sections that might only be 10, 15 or 20 feet long and then you have a break and maybe in that break you've got, you know, evergreens that are lower.
Right, I was going to say, evergreens that mitigate the noises a lot, correct?
And I think the staggering of things helps too, or it's not just a line of arborite, it's a staggering of a couple of different kinds of plants and that helps a little bit of the sound transmission.
So more village-like, less suburban.
Today?
More village-like and less suburban?
Right.
Yeah. You're not going to have, yeah, large, large square, you know, lawnmower areas, which definitely do the opposite of deflecting and barrierizing the sound, so, yeah, we'd be aiming for that, certainly. Nor would we show that.
I mean, if this is going to move forward, I mean, we'll walk, we'll walk the site. Not while it's getting nice.
You guys want to get out of the office?
No, you know, now that we know it's actually, you know, moving forward, we've got a little bit of time.
You should be watering a few sites.
Yeah, yeah. It's a loop, I guess.
Get out your wellies.
These are existing properties, correct? Right now, I mean, obviously it doesn't show any really green, is that to stop these people from having apart, you know, apartments as a fixture of their backyard?
Are fairly open right now, actually.
Yes.
As you look into their backyard.
Because they've had the woods as a, as the buffer. So now we're, you're going to remove anything they have to, you know, so...
I think that's where we have to, you know, we have to work on the edge of our property and frankly, have conversations with all of our butters. We have not had, yeah, but typically we will have, go have conversations with all the butters, find out, you know, nobody likes change, obviously, but we try to find out what are their key items that they're most concerned about. We try to relate their fears the best we can, we do quality development. Sometimes when we've done multifamily things, you know, we have plantings on our side and you let it bleed over the edge in cooperation with the abutter and sometimes that helps. So, you know, what we want to do is create a community environment where they actually want us to be there and accepting the fact that there is going to be change in any environment, but we try to be the positive change and try to get along with our neighbors because we're going to own the thing and the last thing I'm interested in is having wars with my neighbors all the time. So it's behooves us to go out and talk to all the neighbors, see what we can do, we can accommodate some things, we can't accommodate other things, you know, that's just the reality of the economics, but we do the best we can to make sure that everybody is heard and we, we respond to what they find important within the context of what we're trying to offer.
Are the closest developments that you have to here the ones in Verona?
Yeah, Verona and Southern Beach, yeah.
Where in Southern Beach?
Both.
Okay.
So that's a collection of small cottages, that's pretty dense, actually.
Yes, very dense.
And, and actually, that's a good example of massing issues. I mean, we could have, and from a market standpoint, could have done a lot of really big buildings there. There's, I don't know if you've been there or not, but there's, there's larger fourplexes, but most of them are actually just one story cottages, more because that makes it feel right. We needed to have some of the fourplexes because we needed to get density. I mean, every development project requires the economics to work, so, you know, we tried to balance, let's get the right number of units, but let's not just jam a bunch of four, fourplexes in there or three story units in there. So that worked out pretty well, actually, and it's just, it's an exercise in massing, human scale development, so it's not feel like you're just throwing away by sight.
It also, yeah, similar to this, really quick, similar to this, it also responds to site conditions greatly, there's a lot of jungle on that site too, so.
That's the closest one.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sure I'll hear from you again, but I need to slip out.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. And anybody else have any other?
I'm just looking at the slopes and stuff, pretty good grade, and these roads are beating the 5.5% slopes.
It's a difficult site.
It's a difficult model.
All the easy sites are down.
From a winner's standpoint, that'll be, that's a little bit of a hell. It's not, I mean, you're going slow, so.
Those little sites present opportunity too, because it's not just everything on the flat plains.
Character.
Yeah, it's a little more expensive, but...
Yeah, it's a hill, it's paved up, the hill, it's a hump, so, not flat. It'll make character.
We'll work on that.
He said there would be a clubhouse somewhere?
Yeah, somewhere in here, I don't know if we even have it on this plan.
Probably.
We might change one of the...
Yeah, it would probably be around where that green space is, next to that very ambiguous point court.
Building paint eventually, that they're old.
I think the last time we were talking to DPW, I think they determined the roads would not be, that they should be private rights. Right, so we came down to that.
It feels better.
We prefer that.
They got nothing wrong with, you know, any more roads.
Yeah, I think the green space would be as pretty as pot for you, $1, $1, $1.
Okay.
So there's still that, five percent water, too.
Okay, anybody else? Looking at you.
I think I'm good to that.
Today, okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Doug, will you tell us?
That's pretty good. I'm the guy, I'm the guy.
If you're coming to your yard, you can help back. I just have one last thing that I forgot to mention earlier. I had an email from the zoning board and they would like us to ask someone to be a representative to their board. They're working at correcting some of the odd zoning items that seem confusing. They're starting with signage, they said. I can forward the email and then if anybody's, since you're not all jumping up. You know what I was going to look at, I don't have to...
So, it's the zoning board is going to start looking at stuff sort of as a committee?
They're looking at things in their meeting, so it would be at a meeting that, that they feel are confusing or ambiguous, there weren't any details and that they were going to start with signing, signed edging and they asked if somebody from the planning board would be willing to sit in at the meetings about that. So you're going to go, I'll forward that email, everybody jump on the bandwagon. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to have a motion to close the meeting. Again, two?
I'll first or second, I don't care.
Okay, one and two. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.